Yeah. I've been so much on. Right, sir. It pretty much happened. It could be him without his service. I actually.
Nothing. Jenna. I see you too. How are you? I'm gonna move them so I can actually see them. I'm gonna make sure. You're hiding behind the lights.
We don't share like four people. I was here before.
Good. Yes, everybody. Move the person.
And you have a choose to fill out. You know, I did choose to.
And and a raise.
I've got no raises in Social Security the last ten years that I get on my last job. It's seven dollars. I want to be a challenger. I know that feeling, right? Good evening.
Good evening.
Meeting of please, complex order. Adequate notice of this meeting as replied by the Open Public Media Act has been on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. A copy of the notice specifying the daytime and location was posted on the Bolton Board outside of Earl Hall, given to the court administrator, mailed, faxed, emailed to the Courier News and posted on the, um, our website. Many members believes that this meeting is being held in violation of the Open Public Media Act, at least they use at this time. Are you done? These proceedings are of a judicial nature. Only those items on the agenda will be addressed. Proper judicial decor must and will be maintained. Next item, roll call, please.
Chairman Dare.
Here.
Mr. O'Leary.
Here.
Miss Carpenter's.
Carpenter's.
Carpenter's, yes. Sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Menlochlin.
Not here.
Mr. O'Neill.
Here.
Mr. Regevitz.
Not here.
Not here.
Mr. Videmsky.
Here.
Mr. Flores.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Okay, would someone move that the, uh, that Morgan's absence be recorded and excused?
I will.
Second, one favor.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Regevitz, uh, we had a letter of retirement from Mr. Regevitz affected today. Want to thank him for his quarter of a century on his board.
Okay, right, okay.
And I know how, uh, the core four felt when, uh, one of them left. It was like Mariano Rivera left the building. We want to thank Dan for his quarter of a century on board and his leadership. Okay, uh, once we.
I am pleased to speak at the back of the United States of America, two republics which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, someone like to move a minutes of, uh, March fifty being.
Second.
Second, one favor.
Aye.
Who, Carrie, do we have a resolution? Kaufman, uh, sixty mercy, uh, yeah, sixty mercy. Something like a movement.
I'll move it.
Move.
I'll second.
Second, any discussion on the, on the resolution? Roll call, please.
Chairman Dare.
Yes.
Mr. O'Leary.
Yes.
Miss Carpenter's.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill.
Have stayed effective proper during.
Mr. Videmsky.
Yes.
Mr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carrie, um, before we go into the land use and other things. We need to, we need to select a vice chairperson to replace Daniel. Do we have any nominations?
Okay, well, I'll just go forward and I'll nominate it. Well, you want to?
I'll second.
Move in second. Any other nominations? Someone move that the nomination be closed?
Will.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, Ed O'Leary, who replaced Daniel as, uh, vice chair. So, turn up, please.
Chairman Dare.
Yes.
Mr. O'Leary.
I'll say. You can vote.
They can vote for himself.
Miss Carpenter's. Mr. O'Neill.
Is he old enough? Yeah.
Mr. Videmsky.
I thought it was a six.
Mr. Flores. Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Regevitz.
Now we need a new name plate. Right, that's his vice chair.
Tell his chair, uh, says Council President, Council President.
Right.
We definitely will be in good hands when he becomes mayor. Okay. All right, now we have land use. Oh, before we go into land use, it's not on the agenda, but I have three resolutions that I'm, I'm going to ask for approval on tonight. One, we've been passing around for the last pre-COVID, I guess, on the POR zone and two others on employment. So I'm going to be asking for approvals on those afterwards. We also have, just to get rid of some of the BS that's coming before us, stormwater management course. Then there's might be a problem with, with the server. And we, many of us have taken it before, so it's required. We also have financial disclosure coming up. Cliff, could you tell me why only planning and zoning boards are affected by that now?
I do not know. I know for me, it, it's funny how, uh, they, they seem to be very, uh, the DCA honestly just seems to, uh, I think they have special, I think they have special emphasis because there have been so many, uh, local aromatics issues that have come up with planning and zoning members, not to mention governing body members. I know I get, I get them. I just received all mine and they kind, they come in like a torrent. I, I do think because there is more, there is technically every two or three, every year, there's some turnover in board membership. So the DCA is a little more vigilant about that. You know, vigilant might be a rouse term, but, so everybody kind of has to fill them in. I know I've heard from every administrator that I know of this week, uh, in connection with getting them in. So most important thing is, you know, do get them in because it's, uh, it's not only, it's a fine, but it's kind of a black eye for the municipality. I wish I could answer your question more directly. I, uh, the only thing I could say, it's very much the caprice of the, uh, the DCA, uh, and, and very much driven by the, um, the yearly turnover. I know when it first came out, uh, most of the boards were affected. And I know one of our boards, I thought it was border health or library board.
Everybody was on it.
Yep. Well, there are people, I've had, I've had people tell me, I've had to, I've had to, uh, to request the chairman to, you know, take action to, uh, remove a member who wouldn't do it because, because it is, it's a, it's not just a, it's not just a black eye for the board. It's a black eye for the whole municipality and it's subject to discipline. So that's why some, and a lot of people simply don't want to disclose. They have real issues with that.
They keep changing it. All my years as chief of the fire department, I did ten times as fire chief. Quite understand that.
The regulations seem to change every, every couple of years. Uh, I know that I can never carry over with a lot of things you can, you know, carry over the information from the last form, which makes it easy, not with the DCA. It, it, it always, it always changes in some form or another.
Another issue to say this year, that floodwater training thing, that's the exact same.
Guess what?
Looks like somebody at Sesame Street made it, said, oh. You know, it's the exact same thing I saw three or four years ago, if I can remember.
But Sesame Street is flooded since then.
Didn't solve that either.
Well, there has been a, uh, you know, getting back on track since the pandemic, when everything was postponed or canceled for a while or deferred. Different agencies are having all kinds of trouble, uh, because they lost members, were losing members. They had retirements because time went by or, uh, regulations changed and really sometimes some of them kind of changed via pocket act by the governor. And so they have to, they have to, uh, you know, get up to speed on it. So it has caused delay in so many different agencies that affect global government.
Okay. Okay, land use application, got it, ten, ten, got it, ten, please.
Good evening, council.
Good evening. Good evening, soon to be back. Good evening, uh, Mr. Chair, congratulations, Mr. Vice Chair.
Aye.
Uh, my name is Steve Dylan from the law firm, Chief Donald Howard and C S W. My first time back in Somerville for a while, I spent a lot of time here. There are some of the early, uh, things, the, the landfill redevelopment and that process, uh, working with Somerset. So glad to be back, um, and filling in for a colleague of mine, Mr. Larry Calley, uh, who was triple booked tonight. So I'm filling in his shoes, hopefully adequately. So I happen to be our architect, actor for job. He's going to walk you through this application tonight. Essentially, uh, what we have is a conversion of a single family home to a two family home. No real estate improvements proposed, so to speak. Uh, mostly interior improvements, just to convert rather large single family home to a two family. Property was formerly a, um, eye doctor, commercial office, uh, or medical office. And, uh, our applicant bought it about a year ago, converted to a single family and now is seeking to convert it to a two family. Did get a review letter from Mr. Cole, uh, that we've had the opportunity to review. We'll go through that, uh, after we do a brief presentation of the application. But essentially, we can comply with all the recommendations to have a blue letter. Um, so we'll just go through and hit a couple of the, the items we need to provide testimony. Other than that, we can make the plan changes and all of that's agreed with it. So I'll introduce Mr. Job, he can give you his qualifications.
You should be sworn. You saw me swear the testimony you're about to give, will be the truth, so hope you got it. Please state your name and spell your last name for the right.
I'm Rocco Balfour, A G A P.
Thank you very much.
You might want to favor us with his credentials.
Please start, we'll start there. Um, so, Mr. Job, could you just please provide the board, uh, your professional background and your qualifications as an architect?
In a graduate of City College of New York, nineteen ninety-four, Bachelor of Architecture. I've been licensed in the city of Jersey since, uh, two thousand and one and, uh, principal all-time design studio, uh, since two thousand and two.
Name three municipalities that you've, uh, that you've appeared before.
Uh, South Brunswick, both Brunswick, East Brunswick.
There you go.
Fair enough.
It's good enough.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
Good, uh, so, Mr. Job, you did prepare the plans that were submitted with this application, correct?
Yes, I did.
Uh, you've got a copy of those plans up on the board here. I believe these are the plans that were submitted, is that right? So we don't need to mark those, they were submitted?
Are these identical to the plans submitted?
Yes, no.
All right, well, then they don't, they don't need to be checked in as exhibits. If you do anything that like marks it up or colorizes it or anything like that, we would have to name that as a, we would have to mark that as an exhibit.
Cool. So, um, why don't we start with the plans and maybe walk the board through what we're proposing to do here?
Can everybody see the, uh, board?
If members of the industry probably feel free to, uh, you know, sit on, sit in the front seat or whatever, you know, with that, anything that will give you a better view. So, uh, the property has, sits on, uh, Tent Cottington, uh, place in Somerville. It's a corner property with Cottington and Main, uh, Street. It is currently a single family house, uh, two and a half stories plus basement. Basement is unfinished, uh, despite a large two and a half stories. And the proposal is to split the first, uh, floor from the second floor, uh, at the attic, uh, to create a two-family residence. What we're proposing is, uh, is very simple, is no exterior, uh, renovations, except to, uh, create a walkway around the garage to access the rear entrance of the building in order, uh, for the stair to serve as, uh, access to the upstairs unit. And we're also proposing to close the stair from the first floor, so there will be no access to that staircase from the first floor unit and, uh, create that, uh, exit, uh, entry exit point from the back into the upstairs unit. And upstairs, we're going to take part of the large living, uh, area and the training for kitchen so that we have, uh, uh, this is me, a three fa, a three bedroom, uh, uh, unit. Yes. About you, it's me, three bedrooms, yes. Uh, the base, uh, the attic will, uh, be included with the second floor and it's, uh, simply, uh, storage spaces with the bathroom. Uh, and it is a half a story, that was one of the items that were in the report. Uh, the ceiling of the attic is seven foot eight, the knee wall is five foot, whatever is beyond that knee wall is forty-nine percent of the floor below. So it places that forty percent pressure.
But it's just to, just to clarify, so by that, uh, the, the forty-nine percent, the add sort needs a definition of a half story for doing.
That's correct.
It's required to pay.
Yep.
The half story.
And, uh, that's about it, uh, for, uh, changes. It was, uh, very, very minimal, uh, changes, maybe a couple of partitions that would be added, that, that's about it.
Any other questions from the board?
Just want to, is the attic conditioned space outside the bathroom area?
Sorry?
Attic heated and cooled?
I believe so, yes.
And it has a fire escape going to it.
Fire escape is, uh, it's to the stairs, actually, it's not to the attic.
Michael, okay.
Yeah, it's to the landing, it's the intermediate landing between the attic and the side floor.
That's been there for years.
Yeah. You know, we're not calling it a bedroom, but it's going to end up being a bedroom.
Good. Sure, keep it right there. Perfectly challenged.
Are the utilities split right now?
Yes. Except for, uh, something in the basement, I believe, uh, furnace, but, uh, the panels, uh, are split and, uh, the hot water heaters are split, just.
So you're not proposing any AC compressors already there?
They're already there, yes.
I, hello, ladies and boys, my name is Stuart Daniels and I'm currently representing this property for sale. I'm also an owner on this street.
Well, hold on.
That's your turn.
Oh, sorry. I, I, I apologize.
Sir, uh, on the board, sorry. Sir, the meeting goes that the applicant presents his case and the applicant presents his witnesses and then you can, when they're done with, when each witness is done with his, his or her testimony, you can ask questions. Then at the close of the application, you can make comments about the application if you wish. I mean, if you have a question for the, for the witness after, after he's done with his testimony, you certainly ask it at that time.
My apologies. I didn't understand.
Don't let it happen again.
No, I just want to make sure, I, I, no, we're not, you're welcome your participation with those in the, with those in the ground rules.
They can't turn you into a witness. Really?
We'll wait, okay.
I think I had some comments about the roof leaders and the trench drain, discharge is that for this witness?
Yeah. Yeah. Maybe a less.
Right now, I believe there's a mellow reading of the edge of the driveway. The ducting, uh, the water is coming from, uh, the house. I am not sure if there's any other, uh, storm drainage system on the property, that, um, possible. I know that of that mellow reading is free on this, uh, state.
I was just curious of discharge point, because if the roof leaders on this, the, uh, western side of the dwelling go on the ground and you have that trench drain, it lets the water from the driveway.
Right.
But I didn't see any curb face discharge, so.
No, there is no curb face discharge. I believe the water just runs on the driveway onto this, uh, into that drain.
So maybe we can do a dye test to make sure it goes to the catch basin or something.
We have to do that.
Normally what we do is a dye test, just to make sure. The concern is that the, the roof, the runoff from stormwater is not going to the sanitary sewer. And I understand that it's in the ground, maybe in the ground for thirty years. And usually we go to the nearest catch basin, we eyeball it, we put some drain, some dye in the trench drain, put the garden hose in it and just see if it shows up, just to ascertain that.
Yeah, so we have a degree of that as an addition to any.
Are your comments from your report, are they?
I just had one on the sanitary sewer, just to tell us, if it's given the age of the building, just to make sure if there's any, uh, cracks or infiltration that.
I spoke to the owner about this, I mean, they do have video that was done a year ago.
That's perfect.
So, yeah, our client would should just submit that, that when they purchase it a year ago, they did, and we would submit that as an addition.
Okay.
On what I would narrow, what you suggest is that, uh, the applicant agreed to compliance with the comments, recommendations of the, uh, engineering report as an addition to approval. Counselor, is that acceptable?
Absolutely, yep.
In this case, he can submit it product video.
Yes.
Right.
That's certainly, that's sufficient, yeah. It's within a year.
Part of it being a single family, it was a business, was there an apartment upstairs?
It was, it was a, 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 a medical office, but I believe the doctor resided in the building.
He lived the upper.
I think so, yes. I mean, there were some bedrooms in the upper floor.
Before that, the wall office.
Yeah, I remember it being a wall.
Before that was the scissors.
So we, we submitted the plans to make it into a single family, where, you know, prove that the work is done.
Yeah, that's a lot of the zone, we would have seen that. I was just wondering, was, it was, the, uh, the fire escape on the back, it's kind of weird, the, the, I don't know, matter of fact.
Yeah, it's been like this, uh, since, for.
Yeah, that, that's. Fire marshal thinks it was an apartment on the third floor, that's his understanding. When he do inspections, you can go to the third floor, but it was, it was an apartment. So. And I have one more comment, Steve, just on leveling the sidewalks, some of the sidewalks are walking a little bit along East Main. So just to either repair them, level them something.
We, we weren't proposing to do it, but we did, we'd work with you, I guess, to, you know, to your satisfaction, whatever.
Yeah, just get rid of the tripping hazards, is what we standardly do.
That's fine, yeah.
They don't have to be perfect, but just so they pass the ADA standard for.
That's fine, right. Yeah, I just understood.
Steve, do you know whether or not this property, uh, was underwater or in IDA?
I do not know.
Yes, yes, the first floor, yeah.
Was flooded? Yes.
Yeah.
Bring this whole section of.
I, I imagine, yeah, I imagine waters, I imagine waters.
This whole section, certainly, yeah, throwing this product out for, 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 for.
We've had several applications, connect, connect to that, so.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Item special.
Anybody from the board have any questions of Mr. Rajab? Anyone from the audience have any questions of the, uh, testimony just given by Mr. Rajab? Am I pronouncing that right?
Oh, no. Okay, look, uh.
Sorry about that.
No, I just wanted to add that the, um, that the third floor did have a heating.
You have to be sure, Stuart.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let, let me swear, just to make sure everything is clean.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. You saw me swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter, it will be the truth, so hope you got it. Please state your name and spell your last name.
Stuart Daniels, last name is, I don't know, A N, I yell ass.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels, I don't mean to be, I'm not trying to be a nuage, I'm just trying to, you know. Feel free to do it.
What did you do then? I, nothing, but show him love over the last fifteen years.
Stuart is also my barber. He has a gray hair app on his cut, cutters, I came out of the chair looking like, you want that?
Might get some time to drink a bath. Well, no, just as a resident on the street, um, I've, I've actually been on that street for about eighteen years. So, um, I've seen the changes in, of that, uh, of the house and, you know, me personally, I would love to see it as a two family, as a personal business, because we have really nice neighbors and we like to welcome more to our street. The third floor, I, that's what I wanted to say, is the third floor did have its own heating and cooling unit inside the property, um, and the second floor has its own as well. So I, I know you wasn't sure, so I just wanted to make sure that the, that you know about it.
We should have, uh, qualified you because you are a real estate broker and.
I am.
Or barber.
And barber, be multitask.
Oh, yeah, many moons ago, I retired from the barbering business.
You're not next, so it does. Oh, thank you very much, thank you. So, so if there's nothing further for this witness, I'll call my professional planner, we'll talk about the variance.
Please. You saw me swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter, it will be the truth, so hope you got it. Please state your name and spell your last name for the right. It's Paul Ricky, R I C C I. Good, counselor, you're a witness, sir.
Okay, Mr. Ricky, uh, well, first we should do your qualifications as a professional planner, do those for the board.
Mr. Ricky's been here for a rest.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
We can skip that part of it and we'll get right to the, uh, variance relief requested and extend what I said.
The land use planning standpoint, this is an excellent application, I've been out in the neighborhood, um, and I'll talk about that in a minute, about some of the existing land uses here, but it's really my, my opinion that this, this use is, is particularly well suited based on the context and condition of the property in the area. As the board is aware, properties in your POR professional office residential zone, uh, this is a zone that prevents single family apartments in a non-residential building, you know, largely a, a zone that was encouraging office space on the ground floor. This is a zone that I think most people recognize with, with what's going on in the environment today, that there's less of a need for, for office space than, than historically there has been. I've talked about that actually in, in past applications, but, so I, I want to jump ahead and just speak to the area for a little bit. On this particular, uh, area on Collington, while the house is, is turned, uh, you know, it's on the corner of Collington, East Main Street and there are, um, only, uh, uh, a few properties that are located, located on Main Street between Collington and, and North Gassen Avenue. The, the use that immediately adjoins, uh, let me put it, if the use that immediately joins the subject property is a two-family home on a seven thousand five hundred square foot lot. Uh, the subject property is thirteen thousand nine hundred eight square feet. Then there's a, a single family home on a, on a seven thousand five hundred square foot lot. And then there is, there are four units, um, uh, that the corner property, it's a regular, but I estimate to be eight thousand eight hundred eighty square feet. So this median block here, there are no commercial uses on the ground floor. The subject property historically, uh, was the, was the only one. And then if you continue down, I think people realize in the POR, there's a gas station, then there's apartments. If you make the turn left going on Gassen, there's, you know, there's, uh, there is an office building, but there's a full range of residential uses. And then on Collington, there's a mix of two families and single family homes. I counted at least three or four two-family homes on Collington, which is in the R two district, right? R two district doesn't permit, uh, two-family homes. Uh, but they're prevalent in the area. What's being proposed here is, is consistent with this character of the area. Then across the street, uh, there's the R three zone, which permits the apartment use, which is a more in, in intensive use. So this is a use that can, uh, seamlessly fit into the character of the area in a harmonious manner. Heard from the, the real estate agent by, by, uh, converting to a use that's prevailed in the area, it's more consistent and will result in, you know, less traffic and, and potential impacts, uh, to this particular neighborhood, uh, in the. to this particular neighborhood in the P O R district. So for, for all those reasons, I believe that this site is particularly well-suited for the use. Therefore, it, it promotes the general welfare of the community. Regarding the negative criteria, it can be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good. These surrounding properties, joined to two-family home, it's, it's less intensive than, than permitted uses in the district, commercial, in the like, in the use that has prevailed. And in terms of reconciliance with, with your master plan and zone plan, here, I think we discussed in the past, that the reason change, paranoid circumstance, that there's no longer the need for the office space that's anticipated on the ground floor for residential. I, I can go into a little bit more detail, but I mean, that's largely my finding. I note that the rear yard setback, that's an existing condition that's not being exacerbated. We believe we're entitled to hardship variance. And regarding, there's an F eight, F A R variance here between zero point six and zero point two five, zero point two six and zero point two five that's required. And the proofs there are the ability of the site to accommodate that increase in F A R. It's my opinion that, that increases network load unnoticed to the community. And since the, the building is not being changed, the F A R is really a measure to regulate mass forward development and the like, and that's really not being impacted in any way since the building is not changing as part of this application. So I think this is an excellent application, one of the results in satellite land use planning and meets the justification for, for use.
Thank you. Anybody from the board have any questions? Anyone from the audience have any questions of Mr. Ricky's testimony?
I have nothing further, and I vote the board votes for approval.
Anyone from the audience have any comments on the application? Someone move that we closed the upper portion?
I'll move it.
Move second or a favor?
I, I.
For which pleasure?
This is a good break.
You think?
Yeah. I can't think of one reason to reject.
Parking on site for everybody?
Yes.
Free parking?
They have enough on-site parking, they have a garage and a lot of surface spaces to.
Will some, will we have any conditions?
The only conditions are compliance with Mr. Cole's report and our normal standard conditions of approval. I didn't discern anything else that we would view well imposed.
I've got no problem with that as long as we accept the prior videotape of the question. Yes.
Okay, would someone like to move the application?
I'll move it.
Move?
I'll second it.
Second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Darren?
Yes.
Mr. Lett?
Yes.
Ms. Cartagnas?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Budinski?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Gary. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt.
Just keep bringing, keep bringing Mr. Ricky.
Absolutely. Steve, I'll have to keep bringing me, that's.
Don't Larry, you were here for a while.
I will, absolutely. So you too.
Still good seeing you.
Good, good seeing you, Mark.
Yeah, I do house calls, that. That should bite me over.
Do I have to feed you?
You know it.
Let the keeper go someplace else.
Give us a second. Stuart Daniels is one of the top three workers on Sunday. I said he was a back. Pretty sweaty time.
How are you? Hi, good evening. Trying to find a parking spot?
Yes. It's the Brian Graham.
Okay.
There you are. Okay, next application, one fifty-five, one fifty-nine, Northern.
Make sure it's okay for the middle.
Yeah.
Those things are not always as sturdy as you would like.
Yeah, I want it to be at home.
For everyone's eyes. Much of you.
Counselors.
Good evening. Much of you. Okay, good evening, I'm Marcia Zaleski, I represent the applicant, Marcia Town.
Stuart, did you take that conversation outside? The mic's picking up, and then I need to now.
I'm Marcia Zaleski, I'm the attorney for the applicant, Marcia Town. He's the proprietor of Clinton Bagel Company. And he owns and operates the Clinton, a bagel shop out in Clinton, and he'd like to open a second location here in Somerville, in the spot where Subway used to occupy Adamsville Road. Mr. Patel's also the owner of the LLC that owns the Adamsville Road property. So the LLC is, is the owner, Mr. Patel's here in his capacity as the proprietor of Bagel Company. He thinks that it would be a good fit, the reason why we're here before the board is because the approval in twenty eleven, while permitting the Subway, didn't allow venting due to the nature of Mr. Patel's bagel shop. He, his bagels are homemade, and the sandwiches that he would make, breakfast sandwiches, he's requiring certain kitchen equipment, the stove, which requires ventilation. So that's why we have to be back before the board. His, his hours, while he thinks this could be a good fit, his hours are more limited than Subway. His hours were, the prior approval permitted Subway to operate from seven AM to ten PM. Mr. Patel's shop is generally finished following lunch at that two to three PM spot. He would like to amend the opening hours to six AM from seven AM, so that, that would be his other request. In support of our application, we have our engineer, Deborah D'Amico, who will testify. And Mr. Ricky is doing double duty tonight, as he is our planner as well. Mr. Patel is also here to answer any questions or provide any support, information as needed. So I'd like to start with Debbie, just to get us reoriented to the site, and we'll try to keep things moving.
Sure.
Good evening. Uh, you saw me swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter, it'll be the truth, so hope you got.
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Deborah D'Amico, capital B apostrophe, capital A M I C O.
Thank you very much. Ms. Zaleski, you're a witness?
Can you provide your.
She's prepared before us.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Debbie.
So this site is located on the northeastern end of town. Wayley, or is that the end town? I actually live in the neighborhood, so very familiar with it, have been there for many decades, for three. The unit that's in question is the end unit closest to Union Avenue, Route twenty-eight. There's a bank and a tanning salon, a physiotherapist across the street in Bridgewater. Three of the corners are in Bridgewater, this is the Somerville corner, are commercial uses. To the south and west of the site are residential uses of Nomad's Victory Gardens. And immediately to the west is a former gas station, repair shop, that has recently received approval for tenants. So that's where we are.
Finally.
Huh?
Finally, after all these years?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, nothing, I was thinking of one across the street, one of these.
That's the bridge.
Yeah, that's the Bridgewood one.
Yeah, Bridgewood one.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, that, that's still in the, yeah, it's still there.
So, that's where we are, no improvements to the site. Mr. Cole had talked about in his letter a couple of things. I took a look at the ADA grants, they are in compliance, and I'll add those spot breaks, I have those from the survey, or so I'll add them to the, to the parking lot. Of course, the fence will be repaired, the dumpster enclosure repaired, and. The striping, any striping that's faded will be re-stripped. With regard to landscaping, I took a look at where we could place some, some trees. I do think that it needs some landscaping. We could place trees along Union Avenue frontage, we could probably put four trees there, so we could give it four shape. It's difficult along the Adamsville Road.
Yeah.
Because you have the detention base in there, there's not enough room for a roof wall. I'm not, I don't think the trees would do well, and certainly would lift the sidewalks. So, along that frontage, I'd rather not, but we certainly could give you trees there. And I think in time, Mr. Patel's emphasis to improve the look of the site with some, some plantings around the foundation, but we can give you the street trees tonight. I think that's it with regards to the site. Anything to add, everyone?
Yeah, there's PVC fence along the western side leaning a little bit.
Yeah, we'll repair that.
Couple of bollards of bet around.
Yeah, everything that's in disrepair, that you mentioned, no problem repairing. And that's it with regards to site.
Anybody from the board have any questions in Debbie's report or her testimony? Anyone from the audience have any questions of Mr. D'Amico's testimony?
One, one question, no, it's you, Debbie, is the exhaust noise, sound, that stuff, is that going to be for your office or somebody else's?
I think we're going to have the mechanical office address that. The, I took a look at the architectural plans, and I don't think it's going to be a problem. And if it is, we'll mitigate it with, you know, additional soundproofing and, and the, there's enough room off the roof to do that.
The, the roof, the, the applicant has two exhaust vents in one intake. And normally done with exhaust fans, and intakes are done in some, so I just convert over the DBs and exceeds at the unit.
Right.
State the noise code, but there's an issue of distance and attenuates. And the aesthetics were already addressed with the parapet wall, so no one's going to see this.
Yeah, so with regards to that, looking at the architected, the dimensions are for the unit that we're providing, not for the whole building. And so the closest dimension actually faces Union Avenue. It's actually twelve feet between where the fan was to the end of the building at the property, closest rear property, right?
And in addition, based on the testimony, they're not going to be open at nights. So those two standards, the day standard is higher than the night standard. So it looks like we're only going to be dealing with the day standard.
Oh, one more thing, take off my engineer hat, put on my resident hat, can I do that? I, I come on Hope Street, which is the street right there. And with regard to the business hours and the hours of operation, my trash is picked up every Wednesday morning at six twenty. I know because my husband leaves for work at six ten, and ten minutes later, the trash may come every Wednesday. So I, and, and you hear him in the whole neighborhood, you know, before that, and then for a time after. It certainly isn't going to be disruptive on Wednesday mornings. And if he's going to have any deliveries, might I suggest they be through the front door as opposed to the back to minimize, but that, that would allow him to open at six AM. May I have your hat back on?
Uh, the grease disposal, are you going to handle?
He's, we can have.
You've gone to, um, happiness of Patel's warning, we could, but there's not going to be any deep frying, so he's.
The bagels are boiled.
Bagels are boiled.
I'm, I'm just making sure we're clarified, it's basically a low operation, waste oil generation.
Exactly.
Is that what we're saying? We've had restaurants bucket it out, and over time, it becomes, it gets, gets spilled a lot. So you're saying it's a very small operation when it comes to generation of waste oil, right?
Correct, it's like a grill and they're making a sandwich at home, whatever type of fry oil or something like moves on the grill or, or the stove, but there's no deep frying, there's no storage of frying oil and transport pickup, recycling of that oil, that, that's not the situation.
Anybody else have any questions or?
That's a question, uh, would you, do you recommend making noise limitation measures as a condition of approval?
Yeah, they have to show compliance, but Debbie's saying it's even further away from. The concern obviously is the new development that got approved to the west, to townhomes. So they have to show compliance at the property line.
Right, and whether that's through compliance with measurements or with introducing additional.
Safety guards or have a design professional with yourself saying, I'm done X, Y, and Z.
Yeah.
And it's going to need to state noise standards, which is the burrows noise signs at the property line.
Yes, it does, he does need those by law.
Right, it has to need by law, there's a lot of ways, sometimes the charts aren't good, Debbie, sometimes you take out, you make a meter out there and you say, based on the meter, we're good, or when I put it, sound attenuation up there around it. And there's a lot of ways of handling this.
To, to, to make it work. So it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily need an extra condition of approval, it's in my side.
Yeah.
Okay, very good, I just, I, I usually, I usually recommend that Mr. Cole's letter be a condition of approval. Ordinarily, that's not a problem, but I figured in this situation, since you had singled out the noise, noise measures, I thought I would mention that.
Yeah, I, the board has solved this application with Subway in two thousand and eleven. And we understood the concerns and challenges with the landscaping, that's why I listed previously granted, so I think it's wonderful. It decides to avoid some trees, obviously, but that's why it's done as a, as a previously granted, because it was before the application in two thousand and eleven.
Yeah, certainly, we can put some trees along Union Avenue, like I said, certainly, there's just no opportunity along.
Right.
As much as I'd like to see it, there's just none.
Very good.
Thank you.
I think we covered basically all my comments except the planning comments.
Right.
So I'll bring on Mr. Ricky. You can move it.
Good evening again, Mr. Ricky. You saw me swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter, it'll be the truth, so hope you got. I do. Please state your name, spell your last name for the record. Paul Ricky, R I C C I, very good. Your witness, counselor?
Mr. The, is qualified, and we can observe and testify as you can go. Okay.
Uh, good evening, and, and again, this is another good application, one where the use is, is particularly well-suited at this location. From, from my review, the, the change from the, first of all, from the past resolution, we know that the board did not want to encourage restaurants and all that, and the board allowed the Subway deli slash restaurant. To the extent that the board is considering, there's bagel deli, there's a bagel slash deli, hasn't, it's, it's not a far arrive from what the board has already considered to be appropriate to this location. What we're talking about from a, a standpoint is, is someone making a few egg sandwiches in the morning, maybe a few burgers on the grill, but this is not a major, large operation. From a planning standpoint, this is an interesting application, as this is the last property in Somerville. On three other corner properties at the intersection, they're all in Bridgewater, and they're all zoned, commercial one, and they all permit restaurants on each and every corner. If you go not directly across the street, where I think the chairman was speaking of, you have the vacant former, there's a former automotive use there.
Transmission.
And, and then you have transmission, and then, and then as you move to the right, as you're looking from the subject property, there's the strip mall at that location. And in there, there's a, there's a pizzeria, there's a bakery, there's a Chinese restaurant, and then there's a, the hobi type shop. I'm not sure if that's why Subway left or not. But clearly, replacing a, a, another sandwich shop is not really what the neighborhood needs here. It's providing a, a, a bagel shop, a different type of service, that would be something that would complement the neighborhood in this environment as well. And some of the benefits are the limitation of the, of the vacancy, creation of new jobs. And these commercial vacancies just, you know, are, are a thing that we're seeing more of, and it's just not. and it's just not really good luck for communities. It doesn't assist the community and the residents and the property such as this. Your master plan, I noticed is a goal, encourage development and improvement of non-residential uses in designated areas. A strong business community is vital to the fiscal health of the borough and this application would support that goal because the use is particularly well-suited at this location and it's not a substantial change of the previous use that this board anticipated. It promotes the general welfare of the community. Regarding the negative criteria, I think it's important to recognize that this is the furthest use away from residential properties. Hours would be reduced as part of this application. Regarding smells, we think they're gonna be negligible. I can say as a planner and putting on my resident, residential hat, I live directly adjoining a place that sells breakfast sandwiches. It's a deli. It's very similar, except it's not a bagel place. I live right next to one. Smells are not an issue for me personally. And this, in this context, this site will be much further away because this is a property that is over 20,000 square feet oversized for your R2 zone. I think it's seven times larger than the minimum lot size for the zone. So it's, it's a site that's clearly well-suited here. So to the extent that there are odors, it's similar to a grill in a backyard in this capacity. It's not much different. Again, adequate parking is being provided here and there's no changes that are being proposed to the building, the circulation or the likes. So there's no reason to anticipate that this application would result in creating new negative impacts. Because it's an expansion of the market for me use, the law suggests that the negative criteria should be viewed with greater liberality because it's less likely to create new negative impacts associated with the application. And I already said how we've asked the positive criteria and as noted in Mr. Cole's letter, we don't have to reconcile or we don't have to demonstrate why the use was permitted, the shopping center is usually permitted on their original context. So from a planning standpoint, again, it's a very good application, one that hopefully will welcome a new business into town that is, that supports the local neighborhood.
Okay, anybody have any questions, Mr. Ricky? Anybody from the audience have any question of the testimony you just gave? Well, that's the thing that gets me. When we did Subway several years ago, a lot of neighbors were around.
Yeah. But we took care of that in the lighting shielding, which I went out to inspection. And the shielding is still up. It was shielding done, there was some light trespass, Rich, that got people's attention.
Yeah.
And that's been addressed and I think the shopping center, by lack of complaints, has been a good one.
I could point to that as well. I think the shopping center, even through any owners, has been a, has been a good neighbor. And I think Subway proved not, not to be the problem that made the neighbors off that it might come, you know, up to date. I think it had worked out well, but just probably, maybe it wasn't great for Subway. No, it was there over 10 years.
Yeah, but they wanted, because the Hobi, uh...
The Hobi happened, right?
For at least 60 years. It's iconic.
Let me ask the question of the two attorneys. This property is here, it's existed here for a long time. Every time a tenant, they have to come here for a, it's just like a waste of time in Africa, it is.
Well, this particular, for this particular applicant, it was because of the limitations in the prior, in the prior resolutions. There was, well, the retail was permitted, food was specifically excluded, which brought Subway in. And then in the Subway resolution, your resolution limited it specifically to the Subway sub shop and inventory, which brings my client back. However, as for other retail tenants, I don't believe that every retail tenant needs to reappear before this board. And some questions have come up with this site now relative to the retail tenants. It was my understanding that the retail tenants were approved with the use variance, but another tenant has vacated and Mr. Patel has had some issue with the proposed retail use for that site.
It just seems kind of cumbersome or unfortunate that the time, effort, and has to be put into replacing the tenant.
That may have been in the previous resolution, though. A lot of municipalities require, a lot of zoning boards require an applicant. If there's a change of use, that they've gotta come back in, they've gotta come back in and make an application.
Yeah, I understand.
I, I have my reservations about it, but what they're doing here makes sense because it's a D2. Correct?
I know what we built here, it's like somehow it seems to me that...
Could have almost gotten a certificate of continuing housing for us.
It's gotta be, it seems to me it should be a way, we don't have to do it every day.
Working and eliminating the condition as part of this resolution, it's no longer requires someone to, allows a restaurant to be, that would be way down.
I think this was in the previous resolution. I don't tend to push that. I know, I only put that in my resolutions that the board directs it. So I mean, I don't know whether...
That's what I...
I mean, perhaps we can reaffirm that it was previously approved for the retail uses and this expands to this restaurant. I understand the concern from 77 at that time. I guess there was sensitivity to the houses that were coming down and what Mr. Saffara was doing to the site. It was Al Saffara who...
Yeah. We don't want somebody deep frying hamburgers in there. But it just seems like if you can't eat or play with it, you know, it's summer home. I mean, retail, retail market is pretty well gone, the office market is gone. If you can eat it and if people like it, they're gonna be okay. So if you have to spend the time, and I'm not trying to take work away from you guys.
No, no, no. No, I agree with you and it's been a challenge. Mr. Patel hasn't owned the property that long, perhaps a little over a year and a half, but the retail use part has been difficult for him as well because the 77 resolution has gone missing.
Oh, my goodness.
So it's presented a challenge. The CCO was issued for the property when we purchased it. We understood about the sub shop coming in, but he had recently wanted to add just retail cigar shop and it was denied because the use is in a residential zone and he couldn't produce the resolution.
Can we cure that?
The board could recommend maybe rezoning the property as well, it's just that we had talked about that.
Yeah, that's...
That's tough.
That should be a change in your master plan, in your zoning map.
Because right now it's in the R2 zone.
Yeah.
As opposed to calling out a B1 or a B5 or a B4 or something.
A mini B1.
Yeah.
And not to say Bridgewater is a different town, but only the corner pieces in Bridgewater are zone commercial, not only, and right behind, you know, where the Hobi shop is, all the brand new single family homes that are beautiful just went right next door to it. So it's clearly not being a negative land use conflict in their minds over there as well, so.
We've looked through this every time we have a restaurant or an eatery right next to the R2 zone with social and a few others.
That would be the best solution is to, you know, without spots owning it, you know, that's a legal issue we can discuss, but if it's a rezone the property, make it consistent with surrounding properties.
Yeah, makes the whole corner consistent.
Or make it even something traditional.
Yeah.
It also allows the property a couple of viable, you can put a tenant there and then screw around with us for six months, basically.
Six months, four years.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Something on the report, Mike?
What's it?
Okay, anyone else have any questions?
Is it gonna be called Cliff's Dangle or is it gonna be called Somerville Bagel? I just wondered about that.
Somerville.
Good answer. Good answer.
The answer just happened.
I, I was curious. I had a, I, you know, that comes up in a lot of, it comes up more than you think, so.
They got the building, right?
The building, yeah, probably.
Good, anyone else?
Okay, that's, that's it for us, isn't it?
Anybody from the board have any comments on the application?
It makes sense.
Anybody from the audience have any comments?
Somerville Bagel.
Someone move to close the public portion?
I'll move.
Well, we condition Mr. Chair as compliance with Mr. Cole's report. I will specifically remain references to the noise, the noise measures because that's set forth in his report. You want to do those as a separate condition.
Someone like to move it?
Move it.
Move, second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Adair?
Yes.
Ms. Arlette?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Budinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Yes, the bagels.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The upper chair resolution for Mr. Chair office.
Okay, thank you.
I have the bagels, bagels.
Chairman, I do have one thing, if we have time. Ed, you want to take, just take one and pass it down? There is an applicant on North Midow. It's, I think it was a Humbr Yard, I think it was a change up, helping against the tracks there.
For the Tempest Street?
Yeah, Humbryard.
North Midow.
Middle and Tempest Street.
Yeah, right.
And tracks, yes.
Join to the tracks. There are piles of, they're, they're going to complete this right now and they're proposing to put a bunch of apartments in there, major site plan application. And they're asking for waivers on the checklist and this is what's in front of you. We just got a response back today. It's, and what I'm, what the checklist says is show existing lighting, show existing utilities, show existing stormwater management and existing grades. They're saying they don't want to show existing lighting because it's already there. They don't want to show anything existing. So it's a waiver only the board can grant. I don't have, they don't show the stormwater management, they don't show the sanitary sewer laterals. And of course, I like to see this because I don't think this application or site is in front of anybody for about a million years.
You're talking north of the tracks, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's also like...
Yes. Okay, so they're asking for a bunch of waivers. I asked them for, if you look at my comment from March 30th, and they came back today and their response saying that they're, they're asking for waivers because it's already there. They don't want to show it. And my concern is always is the sanitary sewer laterals, the utilities adequate, is the stormwater management impacting anyone? Just show what's there, show existing lighting and provide like ADA ramps. Give me the spots, give me the slopes, see if they comply.
Rehabbing, filling there.
Totally rehabbing them.
Rehabbing your own building?
Yes, gut rehabbing. They're gonna totally gut them and put apartments in them.
Both sides.
Both sides.
That looks to like Del Avenue property.
Yeah, I live, I live right here.
So they're proposing not just to use the existing buildings.
But there's, there's three, four buildings.
Three or four buildings. Yes. I think it's three too. And they just, they don't want to show what the checklist for a major site plan requires. So if the board, I can't waive that because obviously I think they're important for everybody to see what's going on back there.
I'm not in favor of waivers.
No, oh, well, they, it is refunded today, so that's why you didn't get an email on it. We just got the email, Jenna got the email today from them, like two or three this afternoon. Yes, and I'm not in favor of emailing the board anything on the same day, especially afternoon. So that's why you have a hand copy, our copy of this. You see the response. I'm trying to cut to the chase and saying this is what you have to do. And they showed finished floor elevations. Show that the thing complies with ADA, site lighting, stormwater management, utilities.
How's that, how's that building, real grade?
That's why I want to see all this, so we can see...
It's like you said, ran out.
Where the apartment elevations are versus grade, what's going on, is the first scope going to be accessible? It's not, it has to be, I think, Ed, you can chime in on that. But I just want to see, they say they have roof leaders. They say we're showing the roof leaders, right? The roof leaders on the diagrams go nowhere. I think they go in the ground, underground piping, but they don't, they just shouldn't do...
So what type of variance do they need from us?
It's a use variance on top of everything else. So...
Zero one?
Yeah. Okay, because of the zone. This is this checklist requirement, so we have to be, I can't do a...
We don't deal with concessions.
Until this team complete, we can't even put it on the agenda to be heard. So I am trying to move this along, either these are gonna be granted or not granted. And I, you know, just looking for a direction from the zoning board on that.
I just don't, I mean, that's a knockdown. I don't understand how they can re, the buildings are all over the place. Some are like a little, like a, like a office building, one floor. One's like an old, it used to be a drast when you were there.
Okay. Stuff like that for years and years, years and years. But it's a, it's, it's...
Right.
We have both the, actually we're on three buildings recently, those passed water.
Really?
And the lockers activated. So what is this being used as storage for documents, next one, a machine shop?
So I, my concern is that we show the detail that normally we have in the application so we can address all our assets, the aesthetics, DE rest, ADA, stormwater management, runoff, utilities, the stuff, sanitary sewer, how old is that lateral? It's a lateral bigger than, you know, this thing won't stop that. A property that's been around from...
It's not gonna be just a...
Great Shalon's have been there for 120 years?
It was a female when I was a kid. It had a, remember when she was a company, we grind wheat and pops and all that, the lettuce in its horns. So it was there when I was a kid, so that's at least 15 years ago. And it was burnt down once, that's it.
You own the owner.
Right, so you're attached to checklist in case you want to see it. It's right behind the response, just the basic checklist items for a major's site plan. It's just right off this and I have, you know, D E F G H and 175, that's the stuff that's about it. Existing and proposed Tobos, new buildings, paved areas, proposed spot grades at the corners, we can address. The question is, where's the elevation of all these apartments inside? Below grade, above grade, what are we doing here? So that's the stuff that is on the checklist that's not on the plans.
They submitted plans?
They submitted plans that don't have this information, Rich. And I said, you know, submit site triangle. Site triangle is to make sure where they're gonna get out. They gave me the distances, but not the site triangle. There's some landscaping there, but I want to see if it's in the site triangle that is below 30 inches, so it's not in your, trying to move in, exit the site.
How many apartments is it above that?
A bunch, I think it's eight or nine.
And one building?
Yeah, it might be more. I haven't gotten that deep. I just know every building, they're doing rehab and they're showing all apartments. And I got them to show the compressors, which where their compressors are gonna be. So this is, I reviewed this twice for completeness. What you have in front of you, the March 30th is the second completeness and maybe there's a communication issue. That's why I bolded it and says, please confirm what waivers you're asking for to speed this up. And their response basically ignores the number one. It goes on, the roof leaders, the proposal for existing site lighting to remain, the waiver was requested, because they don't want to show any site lighting. And they showed, the architectural shows a handrail detail on the ramps, yes, but the slopes aren't shown, so obviously do they comply with current code? I don't know, we don't have any grade information. There's no grades, so you can't determine where anything's going on without any spot grades. So that, this is the response back today and that's why it's in front of you. And I just gave you a copy of the checklist so you could see. Most of the items, I said termination points of the roof leaders, item two, because I don't know, it appears to be going underground. I haven't done the site inspection, but if it goes in the ground, what's the piping system? Where is this terminating from the stormwater management? Again, same concerns, is it tied into sanitary so remain? And usually if you show utilities, we can ascertain what's going on, not always what's happening.
Just legally, they're not providing information that the neighbors and board made an informed decision on the application, they shouldn't be permitted a waiver.
We think that they want to give us that information because we're gonna come here and we're gonna ask these questions one of a sudden.
Right, it's gonna, it's gonna be a...
Anything substantive, any waivers, I can't, I don't have the authority to waive that on the board.
No, it's up to the board. I'm just, you know, that's how, that's how completeness and waivers are.
The board has renewed it and we're not issuing, like, any waivers.
That's fine.
To provide information that is required.
I will certainly communicate that with the applicant tomorrow and we'll spend a communication... And we'll spend a communication with them and get this moving along.
I've actually, I've worked with the planner who wrote that letter. He's good, you know. So this may be something coming from the applicant itself. I work with Tyra, they're passed up in Hamburg.
I don't recall. I know that we're dealing with Howzer. The architect doesn't, it's not the, the architect's showing everything, he's put the elevations, he's showing everything. It's the, the elevations, but basically the site engineering is not shown.
Correct.
The civil.
Correct.
And I just haven't, obviously, I can't review anything until it's deemed complete, so I haven't gone into that detail on exactly everything about the application. Other than it's lots of apartments in existing buildings. And it's here because it's not, it's not permitted in the zone, name number one. So we had to look at this apartment size, the layouts, all this functionality, which some of you are saying, how are you going to do this? The buildings are, it's kind of a hodgepodge out there. I agree. But first things to do is to... Yeah, so that's why you got this one. That's why I only have a hard copy, not emails. You just got this after tonight, Jenna.
Right.
Thanks, Mike. What I don't want to hear from the applicant is, Mike is holding us up. We put this out there.
Right.
No, it's on you. I see what they require. Without the planning board, we don't, we can't deal with concessions.
The law checks was pretty reasonable, too.
Well, it's gotta be right. He's taking it right. He's keeping his neighborhood.
I doubt that the neighborhood, yeah, I'm sure the neighbors will be out.
Well, I didn't even know if I could even hear it because I'm not close.
It's so funny. It's ironic because it's around the corner, about.
Right.
So it's like, I mean, I mean Bob Bay, he did between votes.
Getting a lot of mail.
And every person will say, I never got, I never got one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Everybody else did. You never get yours. Thanks, Mike. So I guess, I've, um... Yeah, I've got some resolutions. Uh, one, we met, I guess, before COVID or right around COVID, uh, to talk about the, um, the P R zone. And we got another one today. A simple fix. I'm gonna ask that we just have a resolution asking the council to adjust the Schedule A, Schedule B, to allow two families in the P R zone. We've been messing around with this for two, at least two years.
Did that resolution go out?
No, I'm gonna ask them.
Oh, okay.
That we just make a motion, that I'll draft a resolution. As I talk with the mayor about it again.
Like to help you too.
If, if someone would move that we, uh, pass a resolution to go through council to change Schedule A and the minimal, our ordinance to allow two families in the P R zone, we could eliminate a lot of these applications.
I'd make that motion.
Move, second? Any discussion? Roll call?
Chairman Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Alat?
Yes.
Mr. Carpecas?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Bidinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Kelly, good. I talked with Bernie DeBoddo about that today also. Second, I'd like a resolution to go to the mayor and council, not demanding, but asking and memorializing the letter we sent in August, asking for a zoning officer who was certified, qualified, until John Maselli gets up to speed and gets certified. Because we're getting hit with things we shouldn't get hit with. Things are being approved that should be approved, things are being held up that should be approved. So I would just like a little more strength in a resolution, not demanding, but saying, look, this is what we need.
What we need, so the town needs.
It's what the town needs, exactly.
Yeah, that's clear.
I mean, like you said, you know, it's, it's, you put him in a position of making these decisions and he's out there with, on orders for that. And it's hurting him, and he's getting a little nervous, I believe, we've talked this week. And it's just like a, we'll draft another resolution? Strongly. We really need this guy. I called him a couple of weeks ago. So that's what I'd like, a resolution, asking the council again for a qualified zoning officer until John gets up to speed. So I'd like to move it?
Second.
Move, second?
Chairman Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Alat?
Yes.
Mr. Carpecas?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Bidinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
The third is, I've gone, I've talked to the mayor about this a couple of weeks ago and last year, and I've been to the council last about three times. We lost our code enforcement officer. And things are not being, are not getting done. In my neighborhood, I went to the council and asked if they could get money to, like, the old community development block rent to fix up some homes. When you come out of ropes in the street and you make the right, you look at Rocky's, Bodega, and a couple of houses that needed some TLC. There was no money available, but the landlord, the owner of the buildings, he did. He, he went and he, um, he did some renovations and some refurbishing and restoration. But he also did fourteen houses between Bridge Street and Second Street. All the same color, but... But the problem was not one of them had a, um, permits. There's not one permit. Our code enforcement officer would have caught that. Also, there was one house that they were putting addition on. John went down there, he stopped them. But another one, they ordered, it required some variances because of setbacks and complete renovation, no permits. When I spoke with John, he said, he's having a problem. And he went down and stopped, gave him an issue to stop order. We need a code enforcement officer.
So you want any discussion?
No, just want, I'm tired of asking.
So there's, it's problematic throughout the area right now. Positions like that are having a lot of trouble staffing.
Really?
And part of it is the cost of paying the pension now, the cost of healthcare, assistance for municipal employees. So what used to be, everybody wanted, nobody wants them anymore. So they're having an intense problem trying to get property licensed individuals to come and work. So the game now is, it's almost like a headhunting kind of thing, where there's municipalities stealing employees, literally calling them up, they're like, how much do you make? We'll give you twenty-five percent more. We'll give you take-home car, but we'll give you two more weeks' vacation. That's what the battle is waging. And there's this many jobs and there's this many qualified candidates. So there's a lot, and the solar is in a tough spot because our budget's very tight.
Well, this is a budget position.
Yeah, so...
Kevin and the mayor have told me in meetings that the position is budgeted.
So you go to the local municipalities, you get their website and job postings, it's a mile long. And there's positions all over the place.
Well, we have to die. Originally, him buying was a real mistake. And I'm not going to rush somebody, not exactly what happened. He was, that should still be here.
He should, I know. We talked.
Very good guy, technical, very technical. Thoughtful.
So, you know, we can send the resolution, they can post it.
Let's pull it back now, based on what you said, let's pull it back.
I mean, definitely, I don't think, as I look, as I work in that field, looking at our UCC department, just two guys. We're building buildings that require more guys, more certified individuals to come in and do that kind of work. And it's, it's very hard to find those people, and it's very hard to have the township realize, hey, we need to build this department, because what's happening now, what, the other part of that is the fire department's getting caught these buildings because the work that's being done without permits is not done properly. So we're getting carbon dioxide alarms, we're having high carbon dioxide readings. We've had to show a couple of furnaces down in the middle of winter because they're not properly vented. And this is the, this is the triple down of things that happens when things are not done correctly. So...
Perhaps we should be talking about combining that officer lab and maybe down some of those.
It would, I mean, she has a third.
One, a third, a guy better than those, I think, that.
That's true.
Unfortunately, what you'll find out is that if you do that, the guys that work here are also the guys that work there, over there. So it's, you might combine those departments, but you're not getting any more people. It's the same people working.
But you should have someone. Yeah, but why is that?
Yeah.
We have nobody right here.
That question, Ed?
Yes, sir.
How much would it take to bring you in?
Oh, jeez.
Yeah, you can't be mayor.
The hats all these times. An awful lot of faith in me.
Yeah, you can play.
You got a ten, a five, a quick life.
It's all quick life.
We got all the nameplates for you.
So then this weekend, I'm going home.
Well, I already talked with the empty placement, we're moving somebody up and I'll ask, that is the full, full position.
Yeah, man, it's barely waiting back room, but it looks like it might be a shoulder.
He's a western realtor broker.
Yeah, we're talking to you.
Well, I tell you, I'm hanging there. I'm really, I got this chair one day looking like Mayor's chair. Looking like Morgan Freeman. Okay, we have any?
We just have executive who want to...
And we gotta turn off the camera.
It'll be very quiet.
Still, we're gonna have to ask for you.
All right, thank you.
I see you.